Well, welcome to the December 1st Iowa City City Council meeting. And we're going to start with roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Ms.
Here.
Sally.
Yes, here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome everyone. Happy to see that everybody made it back safely after Thanksgiving. And everybody out in the audience, I hope that you all had a great Thanksgiving as well. We're going to go to item number 2A, which is our Human Rights Day. And this is a proclamation stating, whereas the United Nations is an international organization founded in 1945, consistent of 193 member states dedicated to maintain an international peace and security, promoting development, providing humanitarian aid, uphold an international law protecting human rights, and promoting democracy. And whereas on December 10th, 1948, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And whereas at that time, the Cold War had begun, the world was still recovering from World War II, the Korean conflict was brewing, and the United Nations recognized the need to declare all humans, regardless of any factors that separate them, share fundamental rights. And whereas humanity is now engaged in a war against a common enemy, a virus that knows no national boundaries. And whereas, recover better, stand up for human rights. The United Nations theme for recognizing this day in 2020 reflects the need to center human rights and recovery efforts. And whereas COVID-19 has functioned as yet another lens through which entrenched systemic inequalities, exclusion, and discrimination are exposed. And whereas, Human Rights Day is an opportunity to reaffirm the importance of transformative action and building a world that fosters more humane, resilient, and just societies. And whereas, all Iowa Cityans can do their part to recover better by wearing masks, supporting healthcare workers, donating to organizations that support those who have lost jobs and health during the pandemic, shopping at local small businesses, and following local, state, and national safety recommendations. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby declare December 10th, 2020 as Human Rights Day. And here to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Commission is Commissioner Roger Lou Sala. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. On behalf of the Iowa City Human Right Commission, I would like to thank Mayor Teague and entire Iowa City Council for this proclamation. One of the most fundamental thing in life is the basic right of every person, also known as the human right. Every person is entitled to this basic right regardless of their race, gender, religion, disability, ethnicity, or immigration status. December 10th is International Human Rights Day. This year, in observation of this important day, considering the year we have had globally with COVID-19 pandemic, the racial justice unrest, and the current climate of our nation's politics, the Human Right Commission, in collaboration with the United Nations Association, will be screening the movie White Privilege in an effort to continue the conversation and move forward with ending racism and work toward healing our cities, states, and country. To paraphrase John F. Kennedy once said, "The rights of every person are diminished when the rights of one person are threatened." To the council, thank you for your leadership during this trying time. And I'll leave you with remembering the quote by Gandhi, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of order." Thank you.
Well, thank you, Human Rights Day. This is a very important day. And thank you, Councilor Lou Sala. Commissioner Lou Sala. And now we are on to item number 2B, Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club. Whereas the Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club was chartered on December 15th, 1920, just three years after the founding of Lions Club International. And whereas Helen Keller, famed sight and hearing impaired author, activist, and lecturer, asked all lions to become her knights of the blind. And whereas, the mission of the Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club is to create and foster a spirit of understanding among all people for humanitarian needs by providing voluntary services through community involvement and international cooperation. And whereas, with the support of volunteers and the greater Iowa City and Johnson County communities, the Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club provides transportation for a human, corneas across Iowa for transplantation, and provides assistance for individuals in need to obtain hearing aids and eyeglasses. And whereas, in a joint project known as Kid Site with the Department of Ophthalmology and Visual Sciences at the University of Iowa State Family Children's Hospital, dedicated to enhancing the early detection and treatment of vision impairments in young children, the Iowa City Noon Lions Club provides free vision screening for infants and young children aged six months through kindergarten throughout the community. Since year 2000, this club has screened 17,759 children, with 1,091 or over 6% of these children being referred for follow-up vision care. And whereas, the Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club provides financial assistance and support to the Iowa City Public Library, the Crisis Center of Iowa City, the Iowa City Free Medical Clinic, the Iowa Lions Eye Bank, and the Leader Dog Program in order to provide guide dogs for the visually impaired. And whereas, the Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club is a part of the Lions Club International, a group of over 1.4 million members and over 48,000 clubs worldwide. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, here do recognize the Iowa City Host Noon Lions Club for 100 years of dedicated service and commitment to the Iowa City community. And here to accept this is Eldon Schneider and Donna Olson.
Thank you very much. Not hearing Donna speak on behalf of the Iowa City Lions Club, we'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the council for this proclamation. As in every aspect of the community, 2020 has been a difficult year for Lions Club, and we've had to cancel our two largest fundraising projects. And it's curtailed our ability to provide Kid Site services for the children in the community. But we look forward to getting back and being as active as we possibly can as soon as the health and safety of our members and of those we serve can be best served. Again, thank you very much.
Yes, we do thank you very much. And the community has been really wonderful at supporting us. And we ask you to look for some of our major projects once the COVID restriction is lifted. So thank you very much on behalf of the Iowa City Noon Lions Club.
And thanks to you both for your participation and being a part of this today. Really appreciate it. Now we are at our consent calendar, which is items number three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Burgess.
Again, Weiner.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Weiner. And would anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? I do, I do want to, before we have that, maybe the public. We did in our work session, we addressed item 4B, where the Human Rights Commission recommended that the council consider having Iowa Freedom Riders have a seat at the table. During that discussion, it was a unanimous agreement that council did not take them up on that recommendation at this time. So I just wanted to at least make mention of that for the public, that that did take place in our work session. At.
It just, it wasn't unanimous. It was six to one.
Oh, I'm sorry if I say unanimous. I did not mean that. Majority. Yes. Sorry about that. And we are going to open this up for public discussion. Would anyone like to address any topic that is under the consent calendar? And if you want to address council, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. And if you're on the phone, press star nine, and I'll call upon you there. Seeing no one, council discussion. Hearing no one. Roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number nine. This is an opportunity for community comments. And this is where we allow space for people that would like to address council about any item that is not on our formal agenda. If you would like to address council, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. If you're on the phone, press star nine. And I do see that we have Nicholas. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak this evening. Again, apologies for earlier. I apparently had the wrong Zoom link, so I didn't mean to intrude. I left immediately, so sorry about that. I wanted to address something that was mentioned in the work session, specifically, Councilor Weiner had said something to the effect of sitting down with developers to try and figure out what the impediments to building affordable housing are in Iowa City. Well, the answer to that question is actually pretty simple. You, the seven of you, are the impediment to building affordable housing in the city. I mentioned this last time in the previous meeting, that there are numerous decisions that you guys have made regarding planning and zoning matters over the years that basically have made the housing situation in the city much worse. So I would say, you know, first and foremost, look to yourselves and what you're doing, because you're making a lot of really terrible decisions. Additionally, I think it's really strange that the first thought is, hey, we need to go to developers to think through this, not to actually go to the people who are affected by housing costs, which, you know, to me, just strikes me as kind of strange. It's like the people you should be going to to try and find solutions for, you know, housing cost problems in the city are the people who are actually affected by those problems, not the people who are causing the problems, which are, again, yourselves and the developers. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address council? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine. Welcome, John.
Hi, Bruce. Thanks for having me. Hopefully, this is the right place for me to speak. And I'm here representing the Iowa City Downtown Arts Alliance, a group that comprises seven downtown arts organizations, Riverside Theater, Film Scene, Inglert Summer of the Arts, Prop Press, UNESCO City of Lit, and my organization, Public Space One. Together, we have an impact on Iowa City and the state of Iowa that stretches far beyond the small radius we are based in. We have attached a letter to the council packet outlining not only the economic side of our impact on the city, and it is large, but the social and inspirational one. The letter is included in the packet and will be published as an op-ed soon, but I wanted to just read a few paragraphs from it and leave you with that. Art equals growth, not just economic but social. Art challenges minds with new and diverse perspectives and moves us towards a more empathetic and inclusive culture. Iowa City is uniquely poised to strengthen our status as a hub for arts culture in the Midwest, drawing tourism, career artists, and families looking to raise children in an open-minded and creative environment. We have claimed to the Midwest's most state-of-the-art cinema at Film Scene's Chauncey location. We are one of just two UNESCO-designated cities of literature in the U.S. We host world-renowned performers at the Inglert, and we collectively produce more arts festivals than any other city in Iowa. We are active on the grassroots level as well, growing and utilizing local talent through innovative contemporary art programming at PS1 and full seasons of professional theater at Riverside. The Iowa City Downtown Arts Alliance was formed in 2019 with two goals in mind. One, to preserve what our arts organizations have already built through mutual support and the sharing of resources. Two, to continue to build pathways both across mediums towards collaborative programming and pathways out into the community. The ICDAA is making the arts culture in Iowa City diverse, equitable, and inclusive. We believe that art belongs to everyone. So the letter continues with a series of bullet points as evidence of our work and impact. I'm not going to get into that here, but I do urge you to take on and internalize some of these as to know how important our presence is to the city. So we leave you with our ask. We know a lot of businesses and people are entering 2021 in precarious positions. Our groups are too, though we withhold for the creative spirit and energy that has seen us pivot and reimagine throughout 2020. I am the possibilities of the new year. As the city council looks to some tough months and years ahead from a fiscal perspective, we only ask that you continue to keep us in mind to continue to support channels for the artistic lifeblood of the city, for these are not just channels for artists, but opportunities for everyone, for both in economic and social, including equity, diversity, and justice initiatives to take root and thrive. Please support the arts ecosystem in your budget considerations. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John. Would anyone else like to address council? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine on your phone. Seeing no one, item number 10, planning and zoning matters. 10A, Carson Farm Annexation, resolution to annex approximately 196.17 acres of land located west of Highway 218 and south of Rarit Road. I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff presentation.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. This is Danielle Sitzman with NDS. Can we go through this presentation and touch on aspects that pertain to both this item and the next one on your agenda, since they're related? The first one you're hearing tonight is the annexation, and the second one will be for the rezoning. The applicant, MMS Consultants, is requesting annexation and rezoning of a 196.17 acres of property located west of Highway 218 and south of Rarit Road, shown here in the outlined white dashed area. The applicant has requested that the property be subsequently rezoned from a county residential designation to a city designation. That's required, since as land comes into the city, it needs to have a use category that coincides with city zoning regulations. And so, as I said, that will be the second application that you hear this evening. This exhibit shows the existing county zoning. This area is located in near proximity to current city limits, and it's designated per our fringe area agreement with Johnson County as an area inside the growth area, shown here in purple. As we review annexation applications, there are several criteria that we work through as staff to determine whether the annexation is suitable at this time. I'll walk through those quickly. The first is having to do with whether it's located within an adopted long-range planning boundary. As I just mentioned, it is within a growth area designation near the city limits and is therefore within a long-range planning boundary. We also evaluate whether the application fulfills needed needs without imposing undue burdens upon the city. In this case, the comprehensive plan does encourage growth that is contiguous and connected to existing neighborhoods to reduce the costs of providing infrastructure and city services. In this case, this area has been identified as appropriate for development upon the provision of sanitary water services, which are already being planned for in the city's capital improvement planning process. And as I said, land is continuous with the existing city boundaries. The annexation will help to accomplish the city's larger goal of fulfilling the need for expanded housing options, allowing additional land to be developed for dwelling units to accommodate housing needs. And staff is recommending that as a condition of the rezoning, the developer satisfy our comp plans, annexation policy requirement for affordable housing as well. So with the eventual development of this land, additional affordable housing goals will continue to be addressed. Also, under analysis is whether the control of the land and development is in the city's best interest. As I said, this is designated in our growth area, so if it were not annexed into the city, it would be under the requirements of the fringe area agreement. However, once it comes into the city, it's actually more easily regulated through additional city ordinances that more specifically control the style and development of growth in the area. So having direct control of something is always preferable to trying to influence another jurisdiction to make the kinds of changes that in the long term, the city would like to inherit as the boundaries of the city grows. Looking ahead to sanitary sewer and water services, as I mentioned, there's a capital improvement program project planned called the Abbey Lane Trunk Sewer, anticipated to provide sewer services, capability of sewer, city sewer surfaces to this area in the horizon of our capital improvement program. And then there are some other improvements that would need to be made before actual development of this land could occur. There are mechanisms in our code that recoup those costs from the developer or actually require the developer to carry those costs, depending on what particular services being extended. In anticipation of that trunk line sewer extension, planning staff is currently in the process of updating the Rarit Road subarea portion of the Southwest District plan, the comprehensive plan for this area that was adopted in 2002. So it's due for an update. Staff has begun the process of identifying stakeholders who should provide input to that process and kicking up that process soon. The applicant has been informed of that. And so therefore, when it comes time to evaluate development for this land and look at the comprehensive plan for guidance, it's very possible that comprehensive plan will have changed in interim, and the applicant is aware of that. They would obviously be one of the stakeholders involved in that process. Seth does use two criteria to review all rezoning applications, so just a little preview of the next agenda item for you. Rezoning applications have to do with compliance with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. The zoning district that they are requesting is an interim development district. It's a very low-density district. Basically, it permits agricultural uses by right to continue in very low-density, single-family residential units, really at a rural scale, since the infrastructure. When interim development is anticipated, it's not truly in place to fulfill a city-scale development. So speaking of the comprehensive plan in the Rarit Road subarea, this is a map showing the overall subarea. The application tonight is shown in gray, kind of a harder-to-see gray box here. That does include largely residential with, in, under the past comprehensive planning process, the possibility of a stormwater, regional stormwater detention. I'm kind of located around a stream corridor that exists. As I said, that's all kind of up and to be reviewed with the renewal of the comprehensive plan for this district. As far as zoning, as I mentioned, this is the county zoning districts that are in place at this time. And as I mentioned, the rezoning would be to an interim development, single-family IDRS zoning district, very low-density. Some other things that we consider is looking ahead to future development is what sensitive areas might be in place. There is a stream corridor that's been identified on the regulatory maps that we access and regulate by. So that stream corridor would be of interest in the future, as well as the potential for cultural resources in the area. So the Office of the State Archaeologist has advised additional study that would be required prior to actual development. As far as the next steps in this process, this is the outline of all those steps. We're at the top step here, shown highlighted in black, which is the annexation into the city in combination with a designation to a city zoning district IDRS. So I mentioned, there's a comprehensive plan amendment kicking off soon. After that's accomplished and prior to any development, there would be a need for an additional rezoning to one or more zoning districts reflective of the actual intended development of the land and the placid would follow in various site plans and building permits. So as I mentioned, this is the first of two applications. This is for the annexation. Based on the review of relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed annexation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They, at their October 15th meeting, by a vote of four to two, concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval of the annexation. And we'll say there was no good neighbor meeting held for this action. There would be good neighbor meetings, obviously, at the time of redevelopment, including either the additional rezoning or the planning steps. I think that concludes staff report for the annexation. Happy to answer questions.
Hearing no questions. Thank you, Danielle. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Welcome, John. And also, if you're on the phone, press star nine, and we're asking everyone to keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. This is John Yap, Representative Allen Development, who is the applicant for this application. We've been working with the Carsons for about a couple of years now, knowing that this was a long-term development area for the city. The city has a sewer project planned for 2023 to bring sewer to this area. And for the west side of Iowa City, this is probably the last growth area there is for the foreseeable future. We have agreed to the Affordable Housing Agreement. We've had some experience with that agreement for the past couple of years. I believe we are the only development company that has used the Affordable Housing Agreement. Correct me if I'm wrong. We have talked in, in concept with staff about form-based code policies, mixed-use policies. Staff actually contacted me today to set up some more visioning meetings to discuss the development of these almost 200 acres. And we are glad to participate in staff with that. So again, we view this as a long-term development area. We are trying to meet the policies of Iowa City. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you for sharing. Nicholas, welcome.
Hello, everyone, and thanks for listening to me ramble on again. I wanted to bring up something now here. I don't know if you all read the minutes from the P&amp;Z meeting in which this was discussed. I want to highlight a couple of dissents, particularly Commissioner Nolte's dissent. He notes, while he's generally pro-development, he says that it just doesn't make sense that if they aspire to affordability and walkability and better transit and all those things, they just can't keep sprawling out like this. And so this actually goes back to something that I had said at the previous meeting, which is one of the problems with the way in which y'all address affordable housing, is that you always take these things in microcosm. So the thing is, like, even if the individual developer is signing on to some vaguely defined affordable housing goal, you also have to look into whether or not this plays into all of the other things that the city is trying to do. And I think the point about sprawl is actually pretty apt, because if you're trying to, even at this moment, focus on, say, like, you know, a new plan for busing in the city, if the city just keeps expanding outward and outward and outward, then that makes all of those plans moot as well. So personally, and I know a lot of people agree with me, it would be nice to see you guys actually, like, take these things into consideration, how, like, all of these disparate plans play into each other. I mean, clearly, at least some of the commissioners have. So it would be worthwhile for you to actually, like, look at their dissents. And even if something like this passes in the Planning and Zoning Commission, you should at least try to think about, like, how these things can be modified even after the fact to actually, you know, fit with your other goals, because otherwise, you're going to run into problems down the line. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public discussion or the public hearing. All right, and council, just wondering, do we have a majority that will vote with P and Z recommendation?
Yes.
No.
All right, I'm seeing two noes. I'm a no as of now. I think I'm going to have to go person by person because I'm not. I'm not fully seeing everybody. Hold on one second. Sorry. So I understood John Thomas and Pauline Teller said no. Counselor Weiner, are you a no or yes?
I actually don't know yet. I'd like to have a little bit more conversation about this. I'm inclined toward yes, because I think we have some actual answers to some of the issues that have been been brought up. But I would like to have a conversation among council members about this before committing it this evening.
Okay, Councilor Mims, are you inclined?
I'm inclined to vote yes.
Okay, to support it. All right. And then Counselor Burgess?
I am as well, Mayor.
All right. And then Mayor Protem Sully?
No.
Okay. So we do have four that are inclined to not vote for this. I close the public hearing.
That's okay. You can still have your consult before the, or actually you can defer the resolution and then have your consult with P and Z.
Okay.
Can we have some discussion now? I mean, I'm like with Janice, I would like to hear what other counselors are saying. I realize we need to defer and particularly if it ends up that we're still with the majority against it, but can we go ahead and have some discussion now?
That's not a problem.
All right, so well, if could I get a motion to, I guess, have, well, we can just go into discussion. And then we'll get a motion for deferral after which.
With my comments. First of all, I want to say, and I think Commissioner Nolte mentioned this, I'm not opposed categorically to the development of this site. You know, we were asked basically to evaluate the annexation according to three criteria. And the one that concerns me is the that the development in the area proposed for annexation will fulfill an identified need without imposing an undue burden on the city. And as council recalls, we developed in our strategic plan earlier this year an item which said that we should be considering establishing a cost of development framework that will help guide decisions on how to best accommodate future growth. And and one of the the emphases of that particular item was the the notion that we really need to understand the financial impacts over the long term of our development. Because there's compelling evidence that development, conventional subdivision development on the periphery of a city may may in the long term actually be a financial drain on the city's finances because of the cost of maintaining the the infrastructure versus the taxable value of the property. Now, that isn't to say that this area couldn't be developed in a way which would address that issue. But that is the kind of analysis I feel we need before we move forward on approving this annexation. And I know that staff is working on the plan. You know, we just heard from Don Yap that there are ongoing discussions. This is a long term project. I genuinely believe that this kind of approach will result in a project which begins or better addresses the issues, the multiple issues we're facing with respect to affordable housing, which integrates into the concept, the question of mobility, climate change, a whole range of issues. I think we can more effectively address if we at this point in the process, really try to integrate that financial analysis into what will what will generate a truly productive prosperous extension of Iowa City. So that that's the reason at this point in time, I'm I'm just not ready to to annex the property and approve.
As was mentioned a couple of times by Danielle and and a person who commented, it was not a unanimous decision by planning and zoning was a four to two vote. And I I paid a lot of attention to the comments in their minutes and agreed with a lot of the comments by folks. And it was it was described as urban sprawl. And I think I think it is, it truly fits the description of urban sprawl and unwalkable urban sprawl. We talk about the community mentioned earlier about as being a walkable community. And this is just so far out there. And one of the criteria for annex was without imposing an undue burden on the city. And and I see this as as putting a burden on on our fire department, our transit department. There's no green space. There's no park area there. Would it possibly have to develop a park? And also, it was mentioned in the P and Z minutes about the nearby school already being overcrowded and putting that many homes with potential families and more children going to that school, that that puts a burden on the school district also. So I think, you know, there it also you mentioned as criteria is that it meets housing needs, additional housing needs, but but at what expense, what type of housing, you know, of course, they'll fall into the affordable housing, ten percent has to be if it's annexed, but but who's going to be able to afford, be able to afford to live out there? If they have to drive a car to get anywhere because it's just not walkable or drivable or I just don't see this as a as a good thing.
I don't disagree per se with the comments that have been made so far, but I I come at this a little bit differently. And I guess I agree with some of what John has said and some of my thoughts as I was going into this was when we talk about the city and if you lots of things when I have read in the past is you look at a lot of communities and if you don't grow, you die. There's there's not really, there's not really a kind of a staying stagnant in terms of population typically in the, I don't believe in city dynamics. And so when you look at that, the question then becomes where are we going to grow? There is very little undeveloped land within city limits per se as a percentage of our overall area. We we hear this from developers. You look at the cost of lots that do exist within the city and they're very expensive because there isn't much land left within the city. I don't like the idea of urban sprawl. But I believe that the community does need to grow. I believe that we need to have that capability of growing. One of my first reactions in looking at the documents in the old comprehensive plan that I can't remember if it was done back in two thousand and two or when it was. My first reaction was that was I do not want to see almost two hundred acres of single family homes. I think we've gotten way beyond that. I hope we've gotten way beyond that. And one of the first things then that went through my mind was hey, we're developing a form based code for the south district. I hope we could take that form based code, maybe some adapt adaptations to it, but maybe utilize something like that in this area where we really have a mix of housing. Get that missing middle that John that you've talked about. Get a combination of single family, multi-family, not huge ones, but that kind of. And so we increase that kind of density that we need, that we that we can build from scratch. When when we talk about walkability, I guess my concern is when people say this area isn't walkable, and I know at least one of the P and Z commissioners did. And Pauline, you just mentioned this. Nothing that we develop is going to be necessarily walkable when it comes to downtown. It's too far away. But you can develop the neighborhoods. So the neighborhoods themselves are walkable within the neighborhoods, something that John has has promoted a lot. Does it mean some additional costs? And John, I agree, we don't know what those costs are. When we talk about fire, we definitely are going to have to have transportation for people who would live out here who don't have vehicles. I'm not opposed to the annexation. I I'm comfortable with the annexation, but I do think it puts a burden on future councils, and I won't be here to really think about how do we develop this in a smart way? Not in my opinion, not two hundred acres of single family homes. Yes, add park space and all those other amenities. I would hope that there'd be enough density here that you can get some reasonable neighborhood commercial as a part of this. But those are long term plans that need to be be developed. I think that first step of an annexation at this point is not an unreasonable step to take now and to do that interim zoning. Then I think becomes the really hard work for the city and the developer to make sure that we come up with a really good plan that can start to be implemented in three to four years.
So a part of my decision into this, and there's a few things that Councilor Mims said that I want to point out. And it's how to develop in a smart way. I think when I looked at this, this was the overarching theme is how do we develop in a smart way? And a part of the challenge is we don't have the plan in place right now. And so if we are to allow this annexation, and I saw this as, you know, something being annexed into the city is not already a part. So if it was, if it was a part of the city, then my, you know, my thought process could be a little different, but I feel like we we at some point we have to stop. And we really have to look at, you know, the topics that are within our work sessions or as it was just mentioned about even our plan that that was mentioned. So two things that are in our work sessions planned for the future. Item number five is consider as consider establishing a cost of development framework that can help guide decisions on how best to accommodate future growth. We haven't had that conversation yet. And then number six, you know, discuss development of new comprehensive plan to promote housing affordability throughout the city. We have already had discussions about having our affordable housing, having an affordable housing plan. And so for me, since this isn't already a part of the city limits, that's where I I want to pause and say, let's try to get some of these things in place. We have the the south district form based code that we'll be looking at. We still need, you know, to have discussions on if that's something that we're going to kind of have throughout the city. You're exactly right. There is little land within the city to develop, very few in in field that we that needs to be there. But when we're talking about two hundred acres and, you know, I certainly don't want to see all family, single family homes, which I'm sure there'll be a mix. And I I always have a problem with this ten percent affordability. And so that didn't sell me that ten percent of this would be affordable. And and of course, it would go away. So I am not in support of this. And I, again, I would love to speak to P and Z on this. And so that's where I am on this item.
Mayor, if I may jump in, I just want to offer some some clarity on where we're at in this process. The annexation and the rezoning to an interim zone does not give the applicant the ability to build a single family subdivision. As Danielle mentioned, it's really going to remain agricultural uses and potentially large lot developments, but 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 the applicant isn't interested in large rural lot developments. Otherwise, if they were, they just build it in the county. They wouldn't annex it. As the applicant representative mentioned, they're interested in in planning a neighborhood for for us in the future. And in order for them to invest in that planning process, they have to have some certainty that the city welcomes this this development. The sewer to get to this area isn't even on our CIP until twenty twenty-three. So there's, there's just no possibility for this to really develop between now and twenty twenty-three. But by by annexing it, it allows the developer to take some steps forward and really confirms with staff that you want us to move forward with the sewer extension. Because if you're not willing to annex, we really don't need to be investing in, you know, millions of dollars in new sewer. So the comprehensive plan process is where a lot of the comments that I'm hearing typically get focused. We will look at whether we need another fire station out here. We will look at what type of park amenity we need out here. I'm interested in exploring West Side Recreation Center as part of this development. And I know the school district is interested in considering school sites out there. Those aren't things that are forgotten. Those are things that have been noted and are going to be part of the the comprehensive planning process. That plan will be updated before you are asked to zone this into a a traditional city zone or a version of the new form based code, which has always been our intention is to take that form based code and apply that to to other greenfield sites like this in the community. And then if we do that all correctly, you do create a walkable neighborhood that has public services, that has all those things that that you're talking about. My my fear is that if you, if you, if you're not willing to move forward with an annexation at this time, it's it's probably going to bring some of those things to a halt. But we can certainly still move forward with the comprehensive plan. But when you don't have the participation of the eventual developer or owner, the quality of that plan and the feasibility of that plan may suffer a bit. And we might may find ourselves having to to update that comprehensive plan, however many years down the road we need whenever it comes back. So again, just some comments that I I think in just listening to you, a lot of your comments are directed at more of a future stage in the process. So if you want to get there, I think you'll need to just think a little bit more on on what this annexation means and really what it enables us to do moving forward. I will reiterate one point that I believe Counselor Mims may have been somebody else. If you take a scan of the entire city, our infill development opportunities are few and far between, and we still know that there is a lot of growth demand in Iowa City and in Johnson County. It won't be long, but if we don't commit to annexations like this, it's not going to be long down the road in which we don't have available supply to accommodate that growth. And you're going to see that growth move outside of Johnson County, I'm sorry, outside of Iowa City. And you know, if you're worried about sprawl on a macro level, if you're worried about climate change on a macro level, you're really just going to see those households even move further out into some of our neighboring communities in rural Johnson County. So I just wanted to offer some of that as you continue your deliberations.
Any other council comments? And then I just wanted to make mention that we are, we have closed the public opportunity for people to comment on this. But thank you for raising your hand.
Mayor, I wanted to weigh in. I think the where we are in the process is what I think we need to focus on. And for myself, the idea that we have an owner who's been considering for years whether they wish to be subject to all of the requirements that we impose as a city and all of the amenities that we can help provide as a city. And this step right now is just saying, are we willing to expand the boundaries of our community to include the potential for a future development that we have the opportunity to help make something very positive, to make something, you know, what I what I heard was mixed use and form based code from from the developer. And if they're engaging in those conversations, that's exactly And if they're engaging in those conversations, that's exactly what we want to see. That's in line with our strategic plan. That's in line with our our overall goals, our comprehensive goals. And absolutely, I understand the concern with that, you know, our our, we don't want to rush ahead. But we don't, we want the opportunity to grow in one of the only places where we can grow and to be able to do it in a smart way. And I'm just concerned with stopping that process when we know that the need is great and we know that that there are places in adjacent areas or adjacent communities, or even if this stays in the county, where we won't be able to say what can happen with this property in any meaningful way. I definitely share the concerns about sprawl. And I remember a meeting at some point in 2019 that I that I was just observing about a development out, I think it was east of town that was in the county and, you know, close enough to the city that the council had to weigh in on it. And it was, it it was very much sprawl, you know, households that are spread apart and and not easy access to our community. But I think what we're talking about here is a planned development that can be intentional and purposeful and bring our our goals and our comprehensive strategies to bear. So I'm really excited about the opportunity, and I would hate to shut that down just because of where we are in the process, looking ahead and being concerned. I have, I have faith in our ability to help push this in the right direction. So that that's, thank you for the discussion. It's been really helpful for me to hear, but that's where I'm at.
I appreciate what what you just had to say, Councilor Burgess. For for me, I guess sprawl is relative. When you look at the size of this, this, this city, we are really, we are still quite small by any stretch of the imagination. Even when you look at a Cedar Rapids and certainly at a Des Moines. And even if, even if you add this much, we're still very small, relatively speaking. The other thing that that comes to mind is, is if we opt ultimately not to expand the boundaries of the city, that will, that will inevitably put more pressure on the existing housing stock and more pressure on prices with the existing housing stock causing prices to rise further. So I I sort of see creating the opportunity as a as a true opportunity where we would have, once we get to a subsequent stage that's not interim zoning, where we would have every opportunity to ensure that our values are in place, that there is transportation that goes out there so that so that anyone could, so that anyone could be, live out there and get to work in town or get get to the university or whatever they need to do. So at this point, I would say that I'm leaning in in faith, that I'm now in favor of it, having heard what I've heard from a variety of people.
If I could just add one other thing, as I've listened to everybody talk, I share the same concerns, I believe, with everybody who has indicated they're not in favor. And I I don't think anybody articulated it necessarily as well as Laura did in terms of the process and where we're at in the process. And listening to the city manager talk about the fact that if we're not willing at this point to show support for the annexation, when we still have complete control, we don't have to do the rezoning later. I mean, it it would only go to interim development, to zone interim zoning now. We still have complete control over what that final zoning is and what all of this area looks like. And so to have that developer potentially walk away and say, you know, how can we commit the time and the tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever it takes to work with the city on this plan, I think would be really, really unfortunate, as Councilor Burgess said. I think to at least show that we have that interest while we still have complete control down the road. I don't see us, I I guess I don't see what we're losing. I don't see what we're losing by doing the annexation, because we still have complete control when it comes to the rezoning. So to me, it makes sense to show good faith that, yeah, we do. It does make sense to have this in the city someday, and we want to have control how it's developed. And so to then encourage the developer to stay involved and work with our staff. And and as somebody said, I was excited to hear John Yap say in discussions with the with staff, they're already talking about Form Based Code and mixed use and walkability. So I I think we'll all get to that same page. But as Councilor Burgess said, and the city manager said, let's look at the process and what needs to come in what order. I don't think we can get all those details worked out and then do the annexation, because I'm not sure the developer is going to stay around to do all that work if we don't show them a commitment.
I'll just make one last comment, only because you just mentioned, you know, the, and and I believe if this wasn't, if this was already in the city, at least for me, I would, you know, if we were, you know, voting on something different, the annexation, then I would be looking at this with a different eye. The challenge that I have is when you have, we don't have everything in place. And then you have the developers, and then we have staff. And then you're going to have council vote on something in the future that is going to affect what can be done there. And that's where I have, that's why I I say pause, because do we really want to put the developer and our staff and 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 council into a position where we, whatever Form Based Code we develop, is that going to be something that this developer is now going to want to do? I I hear the argument about the annexation and and obtaining the land, getting them under our umbrella. I I get that, I hear it. But I think far too often, we, 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 I I I'm going to say it, we don't begin with the end in mind. And at least for this individual, you know, it's not already a part of the city. So if there's any more, if there's no more comments, and sorry, I had to just make mention of that last comment. If there's no more comments, then I will entertain a motion to defer this for a meeting with PMZ.
Taylor.
All right, move by Taylor.
Second by Thomas.
Second by Thomas.
So just to clarify, this is a deferral until the fifteenth. And in the interim, a meeting with PMZ will be scheduled.
Could we not have the meeting with PM? How do we normally do the meetings with PMZ the day of the of the council meeting?
You you can do that. I just wanted to make it clear that we're deferring this item until the council meeting of the fifteenth. And there will need to be communication with planning and zoning about when they're available to meet.
All right, so that is the deferral until the fifteenth. Rogue, I think I can do just a voice vote in agreement.
You can do a voice vote.
Yep, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Here and none, it is deferred. Item ten B, Carson Farm Rezoning. Ordinance conditionally resona approximately one hundred and ninety-six point seventeen acres of land located west of Highway two eighteen and south of Robert Row from county residential and county urban residential to interim development, single family residential zone. I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff presentation, although, well, we'll go with it. Staff presentation.
Sure, Mayor, so this is, was presented largely in combination with the annexation. This is just the summary again, based on a review of the relevant criteria. Staff did recommend approval at the October fifteenth meeting. Again, by a vote of four to two, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that. The CZA for this rezoning has been signed by the applicant.
All right, any questions for Danielle? Would anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? All right, welcome, John. And I ask all everyone to keep their comments three to five minutes.
Welcome, Mayor.
Yes, hello.
Since the staff combined the two staff reports, I would like a little bit of liberty to combine my presentation.
Mayor, that's appropriate. We typically allow, we typically don't limit the applicant to the four minutes. I mean, it's a, it's a due process thing for the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you. The annexation, the previous item, which you will discuss with PMZ, is really regarding what area you want to bring under the city's control. It does not include zoning. It does not include development density. It does not include possible school sites, possible mixed use neighborhoods, et cetera. It's really, would you rather have that under the city's control or the county's control with the city's fringe area agreement? And I guess that's all I'd like to say about that. It it it's part of the city's growth area that's been identified for twenty plus years. It's part of this, part of the area the city intends to provide infrastructure to. The north side of rare road is ninety-five percent developed. South side of rare road is not at all. That neighborhood needs more schools. It needs commercial development. It needs mixed use development. Right now, it's a single family neighborhood, north of rare road. Our intent is mixed use development, is Form Based Code development, and school development. To the rezoning. Our request for rezoning is interim development. That is an agricultural zone. That is because the city does not plan to provide sewer until 2023. That gives us time to work with staff to develop a mixed use development plan, which is our intent. We've also signed the Affordable Housing Agreement to provide affordable housing. That is also our intent. We are trying to plan for the future. With that, I'll take any questions. I'm not hearing any questions, John. Thank you. Nicholas, welcome.
Hello, thank you again for letting me speak. I'd like to note that the idea that has been brought up both by the applicant and by a couple of counselors, that this is just an annexation, that this is just a conditional rezoning, is extremely disingenuous. Because as all of you have just shown, like what immediately came to all of your minds were all sorts of future plans about how the city is supposed to develop. Councilor Mims mentioned, you know, the need for growth, like all sorts of things already immediately came into play. So the idea that this is just a simple annexation decision or a simple rezoning decision is frankly bunk. I mean, because the thing is, this is precisely what, I I mean, I know you guys probably hate that I hector you on these things all the time. But this is precisely when you need to be thinking about these things, when you need to have those broader, and you're already doing it. And frankly, I'm actually really shocked to see that so many of you were were opposed to this for not always great, but, you know, very good reasons. And that's precisely what you should be doing. So I would like to encourage you that and to speak directly to something that the city manager brought up. It doesn't matter how far along they are in the process. It doesn't matter why? Because you are our elected officials. The staff are not our elected officials. It doesn't matter what they have done. It doesn't matter how much they have accomplished. Because what should matter is how our elected officials actually guide the long term goals of the city. That is what matters. So frankly, anytime that gets brought up, you can just ignore it, because you are the elected officials. You're the ones who make the votes. And I want to encourage you to keep doing that, because this is what you should be doing. You should be thinking in this way. You should be thinking in these broader terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine on your cell phone or on your phone. Okay, seeing no one, I am not going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask if counselors are inclined to vote with PMZ on this item.
Do we not have to defer this since, can we even vote on this before we vote on the annexation?
No, you're, you can't vote on this when you've deferred the annexation.
Okay. So we just need a motion to defer them?
Well, you you can do a couple of things. You can close the public hearing and defer the and defer the item like you did with the annexation. Or you can continue the public hearing and defer the item.
I've, I mean, we closed the public hearing on the other one. I I might suggest we leave the public hearing open on this one.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay. All right, so could I get a motion to defer this item until we meet with PMZ and defer this item until the fifteenth of December?
And continue the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Continue the public hearing and defer the vote till after we, to the fifteenth.
So move, Taylor.
Move by Mims, seconded by Taylor. All all in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? All right, item is deferred seven to zero. Could I get a consideration for, uh, no, 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 sorry. Item number ten C. Resonant at four hundred North Clinton Street and one twelve East Davenport Street. Ordinance conditionally resona approximately twelve thousand square feet of land located at four hundred North Clinton Street and one hundred and twelve East Davenport Street to planned high density multifamily residential. I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant, Jeff Clark, has requested a rezoning from high density multifamily residential PRM forty-four to our planned high density multifamily residential district PRM for the land shown here in the white outline. The proposed request is being pursued in conjunction with the proposed zoning code amendments to follow this agenda item, allowing minor adjustments to the PRM zone for new construction projects, which involve preserving a separate historic structure and a rezoning application to designate land shown, land just to the north of the highlighted area to designate that land as an Iowa City historic landmark. Staff has been coordinating with the applicant on the proposed redevelopment of the highlighted area, four hundred North Clinton Street and one twelve East Davenport Street for several months, as you are aware. This shows the existing zoning of the area. A little bit of overview of the timeline of this, going back more than a year ago, an original effort to landmark designate four ten, four twelve North Clinton Street was unsuccessful. Following that, staff reached out to the property owner to identify another solution and preserve that property. The property owner proposed an alternate way of capturing some development potential in the vicinity while still preserving that land by focusing development on this property, four hundred North Clinton and one twelve East Davenport instead. Over the intervening months, there's been several reviews of concept plans that have gone through staff, also to the Historic Preservation Commission, also before you as well, talking about what was a value in those concept plans and what could be continued to be refined, and then acknowledging that some part of our code would need to change to allow some additional flexibility in the PRM zone to actually implement the concept plan once it had been reviewed by Historic Preservation and yourselves. So that brings us to today and looking at, as I said, four hundred North Clinton, one twelve East Davenport, and eventually four ten, four twelve North Clinton Street. As you recall, this is the property at four ten, four twelve North Clinton Street that would hopefully be landmarked. As you recall, this is the property at 410, 412 North Clinton Street that would hopefully be landmarked and preserved. This is the property at 400 North Clinton Street and the adjacent property at 112 East Davenport, showing them in relationship to each other as street view looking northeast. Pardon my failed animated slides here, but this, these slides are meant to show you the existing units on that north property. The existing units ignoring the floor plan that's kind of overlaid here in the existing buildings. And then what could be redeveloped under the new zoning district on the southern property and in total for both keeping the existing units on the north for the most part and redeveloping the southern, southern parcel. These are revised elevations that you've seen before. Shown from the west, south, the east, and the north. And then the 3D model again of that western view showing the historic landmark property on the left and the potential redevelopment on the right. Historic Preservation Commission has provided input throughout this process and what they've reviewed in the various concepts. The more, majority of the commissioners have supported the current concept. They've provided feedback on the need for rehabilitation plans to be in place to assure preservation of the property once it's designated. Valuing the salvage of materials from the southern properties as much as possible, both to divert them from the landfill and to preserve them for future use if they are desired to do that. Also being sensitive to the open space located between the two structures and the historic, the connection, the interplay between the historic building and the new construction. And then really just in making sure that the concepts as expressed are what get proposed and are reviewed as the process continues. Looking just a little bit at the current zoning and the PRM zoning, they're both for multifamily development. They have very similar dimensional requirements for height, as is the PRM zone is a planned zoning district. So what it offers developers, the ability to do in its current iteration is based on a points-based system where a developer can score points for added value to their development, either through materials or providing public benefits and other categories, and then spend those points to get additional development flexibility. And we do, as I said before, use several criteria to evaluate rezonings. First is a comprehensive plan. This subject property is located in the central district plan and identifies the areas appropriate for high-density multifamily development, intended to be in close proximity to downtown, the university, and other employment centers with good access to city services and facilities. The proposed amendment aligns with other goals in the comprehensive plan, including supporting infill and historic preservation, obviously. As far as compatibility with the neighborhood, the site is surrounded by existing multifamily development, as well as university campus and residence halls. The proposed height of the building in the concept plans is the same as height as Courier Hall across the street. It has been revised to incorporate a flat roof to visually reduce the overall building scale. Again, the open space between the two structures has been evaluated and revised. And a portion of the new construction adjacent to the historic structure has been lowered in height to reduce this impact. In addition, as I said, the concept plan would be tied to the rezoning. Looking at the development process for this property, we're at the rezoning stage here of the 400 North Clinton and 112 East Davenport. After this agenda item is the zoning code amendment for consideration. And then eventually the landmark rezoning, as I said, of the property to the north and any site plan review and building permit review. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval to the proposed rezoning with one condition, that being the substantial compliance with the site plan and elevations expressing the concept for development. And it's October 15th, meeting by a vote of five to one. The Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval of the rezoning. And a CZA has been signed for this application. And that concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Don't hear any questions. Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Or press star nine on, on the phone. Welcome, Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor, once again. At risk of sounding like a broken record, I'm, I mean, I'm just going to make the same point that I always make, which is that you all really should seriously consider whether or not it's, whether it's appropriate to be making these decisions when you still yet have a comprehensive affordable housing plan. Because as I've noted many times in the past, its decisions, just like this one, and in fact, Clark is one of the worst offenders when it comes to basically building apartments supposedly for students that are grossly overpriced for them. And so these are the sorts of things that directly contribute to the rising housing costs for the very people who can't afford to pay it. So I, I, I just want to leave it there. In fact, I'm, no, actually, I don't want to leave it there because several of you have actually expressed a similar concern about how these projects are actually increasing not only the overall financial burden for the city, but also the financial burden for, you know, the people who are supposed to live in these units. And so this is a perfect example of a situation in which you can make the right decision. And the right decision is to reject these sorts of things until you have actually come up with a more comprehensive plan where you can actually think about these decisions in a broader perspective, rather than just approaching them, you know, piecemeal the way you've historically done. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. All right. And I am going to ask council if they are inclined to support this. And I'm going to try to get a different view here so that I could see majority of heads. Let me see. All right. One second. I think, can we, can we get rid of the presentation for now? I think that's the challenge why I can't see them all. There we go. All right. Now I can see you're nodding heads or... So is council inclined to vote with PMZ? Please shake your head. I, I see the majority, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, could I get a motion to give first consideration?
Move for first consideration.
Second, Mims.
Move by, please, seconded by Mims. All right, council discussion.
I'm not excited at all about this project. I, I don't like the size of the new building. I but a lot of time and effort from Historic Preservation has gone into this. And, and from their perspective, the value of preserving that building, I think at 410, 412 Clinton. I guess I would have one question for Danielle. I sorry missed when I should have asked it. And that is, how much public input have we gathered from the neighbors? I'm just, I know the Historic Preservation Commission's been very involved, but I guess my question becomes, when those two buildings come down on the corner, one on the corner of Clinton and is it Davenport, and then the other one, and this really, really big building starts going up there. I guess my question is, how much do the neighbors really understand what's going to happen there?
So a good neighbor meeting was not held for this project. However, because it's been on various public hearing agendas, it's had probably more than its fair share of exposure for the public. There are not a lot of owners living in vicinity to the, to this property. I know we've received comment from one gentleman who is an owner occupant of a nearby structure. But I think by and large, the neighborhood is comprised of multifamily apartment buildings with the property owners having gotten noticed through the notice process for the surrounding notification area of those public hearings, but not necessarily independent stakeholder meetings.
Thank you.
This has just been a really tough decision for me. I, I, I keep feeling like our hands are tied on this because with our, well, at least my desire and some previous members on the council's desire to have this preserved as historic building, that's really important to us and it's obviously very important to our Historic Preservation Committee for reasons that they cited. So it's just really tough. And I appreciate the efforts of the owner of the property and the developer to try to work around our concerns. And they've redesigned the building a couple of times, but it's still, even as Susan, our counselor Mims described it as a large building, it, it does look large. And I think what I think, look at is the compatibility with the neighborhood. And it, it just doesn't seem to, to fit with that neighborhood. And, and it reminds me a little bit about the Augusta Place development with the UU Church. And Allen, the Allen Corporation worked really hard to incorporate that building, the church, into their new design, but it still sort of overcomes that historic building. Kind of gets swallowed up in it, and I'm afraid that's what will happen with this. But I, I'm just not sure where to go with my thoughts of wanting to preserve. I, I don't know if we denied this, whether, whether the owner and the developer would go along, continue to go along with trying to preserve that building.
I just, I just was hoping other counselors could maybe help clarify on kind of how we got here. I think I heard Danielle say the hope is that, you know, there'll be historic landmarking for the, the historic building. And my understanding was that previously council had looked to landmark that building and that, that had not, that that required a supermajority because the owner was not favorable to it and that that failed. And so now we're in a position of brokering a deal to have some assurance that they will go along with the landmarking. As I, you know, it, it doesn't seem to be a condition of the CZA if I'm understanding that correctly. So I, I guess I'm just not sure what assurance we have or how do we, how do we know that's going to go forward that way?
I can clarify if that wasn't very clear. The, the applicant would, so in the original landmark rezoning effort, the property owner was not the applicant and they opposed the landmarking. In this instance, the property owner will be the applicant. It would be a voluntary landmarking that they would have agreed to proceed with in conjunction with these changes. So the reason that's not on the agenda with it at this evening is that they wanted us to start this process on the items that are on our side of the table to complete, at least get them in the works. So that they would then have their hearings on their applications and it would all end up on the same final agenda together. So they've committed to making the landmarking application. It's actually in process already, and so they've all come out at the end together.
Thank you for that.
Right, so, so if, so basically this is driven by not getting the supermajority to begin with to landmark it and that is okay. So with the council has sort of put itself in this position in some ways.
There was a, there was a majority of council that wanted to preserve it, but I think it was maybe one vote short of that supermajority. So knowing that there was a majority at the time that, that strongly wanted to, to favor that, that's what initiated those conversations between staff and the applicant. And that's, that's how we ended up here.
I'm going to support this. I think I was a part of the not supermajority, I guess. I, I, I wanted to preserve the historic port, part of this building, but we couldn't reach enough supermajority. I, I, I looked at this, I looked at the notes. I, I'm going to support it. I, I think I'm in the same boat as Councilman Mims where it's not, it, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles. I know the aesthetics, there was a lot of conversation about that. For me, you know, sometimes you have to give and take a little bit. But we're talking about the rezoning tonight, so I'm going to support this. Yeah.
I, I will be supporting it as well. You know, there's a lot of effort that I'd like to thank staff, the Historic Preservation Planning Commission, the applicant, and work, trying to work out a remedy to this situation we found ourselves in. And I think it's the best we could do, given the circumstances. The main focus was to preserve that historic building, and this will achieve that. So I'm happy to support it. And there were some comments regarding possible changes during the staff review regarding aesthetics. So that's another opportunity to see if we can't refine the building a little bit more.
All right. Can I, so sound like we? Let me think. I think I lost. Yes. All right. Yeah, we're gonna take roll call. Sorry.
Taylor?
Yes.
T?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence? Move by Sally, seconded by Thomas. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed to seven to zero. Item 10D zoning code amendment, PRM zone bonus provisions ordinance. Ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning to allow minor adjustments in planned high-density multifamily residential zones for new construction projects which involve preserving a separate historic structure. I'm going to open the public hearing. And staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So as a continuation of the discussion in August at your work session where staff presented the concept to potentially redevelop this property and identified the need to provide additional relief from zoning code regulations in the PRM zone in order to accomplish the applicant's concept. Therefore, what you're seeing next is the code, code changes that were designed to accomplish that to allow minor adjustments in planned density, high, planned high-density multifamily residential zone or PRM zones for new construction projects which involve preservation of a separate historic structure. And the amendment may also incentivize some future historic preservation efforts, although staff expects the application of this, these code changes to be fairly limited. So staff developed the proposed amendment to be similar to existing forms of flexibility and incorporated into the PRM zone bonus provisions that I mentioned earlier, where applicants score points and then spend points. It's written as that new construction projects which are involving a separate preservation of budding would be eligible for those bonus provisions. It allows for minor adjustments. It does require staff design review. So there's an additional level of design review over and above most other types of applications in the PRM zone. And then there's specific applicability and review criteria that were developed just for this specific kind of bonus. So again, this is for new construction, separate abutting historic landmark designation, property preservation, minor adjustments, and properties not needing to be under the same ownership. Some perhaps a little bit of that transfer development rights concept that we explored, but not really fully that, simply that the owners involved don't have to be the same, but they must agree to the project. And the specific waivers and exclusions that would be eligible for those minor modifications or anything from dimensional requirements like lot sizes and setbacks, heights and widths, lot coverages, open spaces, number of bedrooms, intensity to some of the development standards for multifamily, which have to do with the site improvements, the parking area, the screening requirements, the access for people and vehicles, the design of building entrances and then building material scale design, as well as a kind of general site standards for parking requirements, signs, and other things like trees and landscaping and lighting. It does exclude things that we want to continue to regulate regardless that such as sensitive features and flood clean management requirements. As I said, there's some additional approval criteria that would be implemented to review projects under this bonus waiver provision. Designating the property as an Ivy City landmark, providing a rehabilitation, rehabilitation plan for the landmark property to ensure it continues to be preserved once it's designated and diverting materials from the landfill whenever possible as part of demolition. As far as the approval criteria that I mentioned, there would be some limits on height. With the designation, we talked a little bit before about the relative scale of historic buildings next to new construction. Certainly sensitive to that and would be looking at ways to preserve historic properties and not detract from the overall neighborhood through new development. Consistency with the comprehensive plan and other district plans as well as the historic preservation plan. So staff did an analysis of where this code change would be applicable. There are several areas where we have PRM development in the city. However, really, staff anticipates that the near north side area is most likely to see this protection. And there are some historic properties in the four base code Riverfront Crossings area, but they have another means of accessing bonuses for historic preservation and would likely not be using this designation because they would choose to go to the Riverfront Crossings Form Based Code zoning district instead and access other incentives and development styles under that zoning. Again, staff uses some basic criteria as we draft these kinds of code changes. We obviously want to support the stated goals of our long-range plans and our historic preservation plans while still providing the flexibility for redevelopment and infill, knowing that that is sometimes difficult. And obviously, in this case, really focusing on the historic preservation. As we draft these code changes, we're also trying to limit them and anticipate all of their other impacts. And we feel like we've done a good job with that in this case. This table shows for illustrative purposes the additional development potential that would be unlocked through this code change. The far right column is the concept expressed by the applicant. And the column to the left of that showing what the current limits under PRM would be without accessing these code changes for historic preservation. Again, in the process, this is following that rezoning to PRM. This is a zoning code amendment to the standards in the PRM zoning district. Again, the rezoning of the property to the north will follow on a following agenda as it works its way, its way through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So based on a review of the relevant criteria and potential impacts, staff did draft and recommend the zoning code be amended to, as explained, to facilitate the preservation of historic structures specifically for tenant 412 North Clinton Street. As local historic landmark, which would occur in conjunction with the redevelopment of the southern subject properties on the previous rezoning. As I said, the amendment may incentivize some future historic preservation efforts, although we really feel that will be limited. And as October 15th, meaning by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with our opinion and did also recommend this zoning code change. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions for Danielle? Hearing none. Oh, sorry, go right ahead.
You said that, Danielle, you said that you couldn't foresee very many other applications, but it strikes me a little bit like some of the other, some of the other amendments that you all have been putting forward recently as, yes, perhaps designed for one specific instance to some degree, but that it could have, it could be helpful in in working with people who want to improve properties in an area that's already quite built up.
Possible. Are the other code changes we've presented to you most recently are probably more likely to have a larger impact than this one. I say that because really the PRM zone is not a widely used zoning district. It only is used in the three areas that were shown on that map. One of those three areas being the Riverfront Crossings, which really is not where we see PRM continuing to exist. It will be replaced by eventual rezonings to Riverfront Crossing Form Based Code District zoning designations. So this one really is a much more limited scope than some of the other ones, but it's possible.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Danielle? Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine on your phone. Seeing no one. For council, can we stop the screen share, please? Thank you. So for council, are you inclined to vote with PNC recommendation? All right, I see a majority of people, so then I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I get a motion to get first consideration?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Mims.
All right, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
T?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero, item 10E. Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Riverfront Crossing West, Riverfront Crossing Expansion. Resolution to amend the downtown and Riverfront Crossings master plan a part of Iowa City's comprehensive plan to include property located north of the Iowa Interstate Railroad, east of Olive Street and south of Myrtle Avenue in the West Riverfront Sub District. I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past several years, K&amp;F Properties LLC has purchased and assembled 15 parcels or approximately four acres of property located north of Iowa Interstate Railroad, slightly east of Olive Street, south of Myrtle Avenue and west of Riverside Drive. Let me show you the map while I talk, I'll go back in a second. Not including 513 South Riverside Drive, which is the corner, southwest corner of Myrtle and Riverside. The owner is working with Shive Hattery to prepare three applications to allow for, or three applications to allow for the eventual development of a mixed-use project with housing, retail and hospitality and neighborhood service uses. This specific application is for a comp plan amendment adding the subject properties into the West Riverfront Sub District of the Downtown and Riverfront Map Crossings Master Plan. This is a necessary step prior to rezoning. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment must be approved prior to changes of the zoning of the property since one of the review criteria for rezoning is compliance with the comprehensive plan and also to make changes to the zoning regulating plan maps. So as I indicated, this is the property outlined in white that is under consideration for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The two other agenda items tonight, having to do this with this property are actually rezoning that land to a Riverfront Crossings zoning sub-district. And then also a change the text of the zoning code. One, to adjust a map to also reflect this change. And a second, kind of more substantive one to address the height standards for properties in this sub-district. The yellow dash line here shows an area that's already in the West Riverfront Form Based Code District. However, it's not zoned one of those districts yet. So this is the area in yellow is also part of the potential redevelopment. It is already eligible for rezoning to Riverfront Crossings. Some photos showing the existing conditions on the site, Riverside Drive on the right-hand side of both of these pictures. And this is the existing zoning, again, kind of a hodgepodge of zoning districts. And the areas in blue are the areas that are already in the Form Based Code Riverfront Crossings District and zoned Riverfront Crossings designation. This map shows you again the West Riverfront Expansion area in relationship to the West Riverfront District as a whole. Also, the Orchard District is shown there and outlined. That was a district that was after adoption of the plan also added in a similar process to this. This would be expansion, as I said, of the West Riverfront Sub District. Existing uses of the property are residential, primarily multifamily with some single-family uses. It's on the bluff along the river and has a significant grade change from west to east. And the proposed use would be, as I said, mixed use and redevelopment would follow the Form Based Code zoning district standards and result in a more cohesive pedestrian-friendly environment. Sensitive in this area is the single-family district or single-family homes to the west along Olive. As I said, there's some significant grade though, so as we get further into these applications, I'll discuss that further. For comprehensive plan amendments, there's two review criteria and one having to do with changed circumstances, the other having to do with compatibility with the comprehensive plan. In regard to changed circumstances, information or factors, the current district plan under which this property is regulated is the Southwest District Plan. It was adopted in 2002. And it was identified this land as kind of a transition area in some ways. More recently, the Riverfront Crossings Master Plan was adopted in 2013. And the two plans really have different ways of going about kind of the same things. And the Southwest District Plan predates Form Based Coding in the city. And so it accomplishes its goals through its future land use map. The Form Based Code kind of reflects an evolution in our, our way of implementing our vision by looking at kind of more holistic, design-based approaches. Also a changed circumstance, obviously, is the semblance of the 15 different parcels under one ownership. At the time, the master plan was undertaken even in 2013, that was not contemplated. So that is one of the reasons why the expansion at this time is appropriate is that really it wasn't contemplated at the time, but it's relevant now as a changed circumstance. And this is meant to illustrate other changes in the neighborhood over time. This is an aerial image snap from 2012. Part of the subject property is on the top of the screen highlighted in blue. And the area highlighted in yellow in the middle represents, as I go through these slides, you'll see it change over to multifamily development or has redeveloped as multifamily to the south and kind of the orange color is more of the commercial district. So as we flip over to 2019, you can see quite a bit of redevelopment has occurred in this neighborhood. Some of the redevelopment in this neighborhood was really at the beginnings of the Form Based Code process and really, the beginning and the middle of the Form Based Code process has really implemented a lot of those design ideals. This is a street ground level view of those same areas, the Orchard Labs and Riverview West being the multifamily development and the properties on the east being the commercial. As far as compatibility with the comprehensive plan, as I said, the Southwest District and the comprehensive plan have been the longstanding way of looking at, expressing the vision for infill development in this area with sensitivity and transition between types of housing between single-family neighborhoods and more intense multifamily and even commercial uses. Supporting generally commercial and downtown vitality and attracting mixed uses as much as possible. The Southwest District Plan, as I said, uses a future land use map, plan map for showing those transitions in the area. And then the Downtown and Riverfront Crossings Master Plan were recently focusing more on the form of development and having the former development result in pedestrian, pedestrian-oriented and mixed use in the activating streetscapes so they're welcoming. And also changing the emphasis of where buildings are placed on sites. The parking is really de-emphasized, buildings are at the corners, buildings are set back much more shallowly, shallow from the street, really more addressing the street. And the proposed area is a logical extension of the West Riverfront Sub District. As I mentioned, the areas in blue here are where the Riverfront Crossings Form Based Code Districts have already been rezoned, properties have already been rezoned to that. The subject property is that highlighted in white and yellow. And as far as compatibility with adjacent properties, again, this shows the Form Based Code standards for heights. There are some limitations on heights when they abut residential properties in the Form Based Code. So that's the area shown in red. There are less restrictions as that transition happens away from a single-family neighborhood. So that's that area shown in blue. There is over 50 feet of grade change across the site. So again, there's a way to step down development away from and incorporating different forms of development across the site. As far as next steps to development, we're on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. As I mentioned, there's also rezoning. So if the comprehensive plan changes are considered appropriate, then the rezoning would allow for a designation of the land as a, as a West Riverfront District. And then also the zoning code changes, as I mentioned, would be the third application relative to this redevelopment concept. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed amendment. We believe it incorporates the subject property into the downtown and Riverfront Crossings Master Plan and supports the policies of it and the comprehensive plan. At their November 5th meeting, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval of the proposed amendment. Approval will allow for pending rezoning, as I said, a zoning code change. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions, the applicant conducted their Good Neighbor Meeting in a virtual format on October 28th and did accept comments and questions from the public. And that concludes staff report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions?
I
Please go right ahead.
I just have a quick sort of a technical question for Danielle because I'd seen some correspondence, some folks regarding what to classify this, this area as. And the Orchard District was mentioned since it sort of, it abuts that and quite a bit of the property. What would be the difference, Danielle, like the bullet points for Orchard District versus the West Riverfront District?
Sure. The Orchard Court Sub District versus the West Riverfront Sub District has different height limitations. Really much lower heights would be allowed in Orchard, the Orchard Court scenario. That district, as I mentioned, was an add-on after the development of the original Form Based Code and Master Plan. Its context is much more in a neighborhood. Didn't think the dog could operate the door. But in this district, the West Riverfront District is intended really to be focused on the riverfront. It is kind of bisected by Riverfront Drive. So there are some properties on the east side of Riverside Drive that really are intended to take benefit from the river views. Then on the west side of Riverfront or Riverside Drive, to the south of the railroad, releasing commercial properties that were intended to redevelop. This area was really, as I said, not looked at as part of that because the redevelopment potential just wasn't evident at the time the master plan was undertaken. But it seems to be much more like the West Riverfront District than Orchard Court in that the separation of it from the existing single-family neighborhood is really much greater than in the Orchard Court area, which is kind of nestled in amongst single-family homes in that neighborhood. There are some other differences, I'm sure, in some minor aspects of design, but primarily it has to do with heights.
Thank you.
Danielle, one question, this is John, I had on the staff recommendation. It mentioned item or number three, in the event that the owner pursues any bonus height for buildings proposed next to the existing single-family on Olive Street, and then it goes on. Are bonus heights allowed in that area that would abut the single-family residential? Because what I, what I also saw on one of the massing studies, this would be one, for example, Riverside Drive looking west. There was a reference to building heights, but it states, however, bonus height is not allowed on lots that have residential zone. So I would, that seemed to run against what I was reading or understanding. So I would, that seemed to run against what I was reading or understanding. The, the staff recommendation, one of the conditions where it said that bonus heights would be allowed. Can you clarify it for me?
Sure. So if it's a budding residential, no bonus height above the base maximum is allowed.
Four stories?
Right, which is the red area currently abutting residential. Now, obviously with 15 parcels, we're also recommending they replat this so that some of those property lines are probably going to all be altered. So the exact dimensions of the red area may change as they, as they replat all of this into, you know, one or two lots, whatever works with their development concept when it comes to that.
What is the setback against the residential there?
They're pretty similar throughout the form based code districts. They're generally 10 feet. It's intended that buildings really address the street and don't have large setbacks because when what we see those result in is surface parking. So the minimum setbacks are quite small and they would be everywhere in the, in the form based code districts.
All right. Any other questions for Danielle? This is our opportunity to hear from the public. If you wish to address, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Keep your comments three to five minutes. We'll have Nicholas followed by Mark. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note with regard to two of the, the completed properties that Danielle had mentioned. The one on, well, it's not really on Orchard, it's like on Orchard as it's going into the cul-de-sac, but then also the one that's right on Riverside Drive, I think like just north of the come and go. Now, those two properties are actually perfect examples of the problem that I've been trying to get you all to acknowledge. And so in both of those cases, in fact, the, the one on Riverside is really interesting because not only were the units in it extremely expensive, but because of that fact, shortly after it was completed, like it had an extremely high vacancy rate for a really long time. I don't know what the vacancy rate is now because I haven't looked into it recently, I could. But I mean, this isn't, this is an issue here where like these expensive units keep getting built. They're not really fully occupied. And then in this instance, we have another example of you're being asked to make another piecemeal decision. And I hate to keep harping on this point, but it's really important. You do not have a comprehensive affordable housing plan. And so when you keep making these decisions that are going to produce more of these buildings with these unaffordable units in them that don't go occupied, you need to really seriously, I mean, I know this just seems like, oh, well, we're making a minor change to, you know, the zoning code. But you're not just making a minor change to the zoning code. You're doing something that, that starts the ball rolling on all of these other processes that continue to make the housing crisis in the city worse and worse and worse. And I really need, I really hope you guys think of this in those terms because those are precisely the terms that you really should be thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Welcome, Mark.
Yes, hi, I'm Mark Siebold, I'm a shy of Hattery Architecture Engineering. I'd like to kind of present.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Very faintly.
Is that better?
Not really.
Mayor, while he's trying to figure out his sound, I think he has a presentation, so I'm going to promote him so he can share his screen.
All right.
Mark, you should be able to share your screen.
All right. And I'm still trying to figure out my audio.
Yeah, you're still very faint.
Gosh, that is, okay. I, I have no idea what's going on. Can I yell? Is this better?
We can hear you.
Okay, so, well, good evening. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. Thank you, Danielle, for describing the project. Again, I'm Mark Siebold, I'm a shy of Hattery in engineering, shy of Hattery Architecture Engineering. I will be going through our comprehensive plan and rezoning document quickly. It's a pleasure to finally present this to council. You know, we've been working with the city for over a year on this and, and it's just a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. Tonight, we also have owners Steve Long and Kevin Kane from Riverfront West, as well as Mary Ann Dennis, who is our affordable housing consultant. You know, our conversations with the city have included a lot of dialogue about that Olive Street neighborhood and about the building heights, as well as the adjacency to the railroad tracks. We've had, as Danielle said, a, a good neighbor meeting, it was virtual. It was nice to be able to present this to the neighbors of this project. And, and we do have support from really the owner, the only owner occupied home on the east side of Olive Street who actually sold us one of the parcels to make this, to make this project happen. So again, I'd just like to tonight briefly run through our conceptual design documents. It's a diagram, these are concept plans to show kind of, you know, development scenarios for the properties. And then to illustrate what the potential character of development could be. Again, our goal is, is to provide high quality multifamily housing, possibly for active seniors, but also to have onsite commercial amenities to support those residents as well as the surrounding neighborhood. And as again Danielle said, this area of town has seen a lot of great development, a lot of that is, is due to the, to the Iowa River Crossings District that's been adopted. So if I go through this diagram, again, these are some of those same aerial photos that Danielle said, you know, this site is largely paved. There's no existing pedestrian circulation through the site. And all along Riverside Drive, it's basically a free for all from a vehicular access point.
Are you, are you sharing your screen?
Yeah.
I am.
We're not seeing it.
I'm sorry, man. I'm usually better at this. I've been doing this for nine months. Oh, there we go.
Great.
How's that? Okay. So again, some of those aerial photos that Danielle had shared. No pedestrian circulation, it's largely just a, a big paved site. You can see the, the, it's really kind of haphazard development that's happened over time where you've got fronts of buildings to backs of buildings and just a lot of parking and asphalt in between. Again, the buildings don't relate to each other and really just show a bleak back of house to the Olive Street neighborhood. But the views appear fantastic. You can see the buildings also really don't address Myrtle. It's a series of driveways with no real entry points for the buildings. Don't really contribute to the neighborhood. And again, this is where you, you can really see that great change. We're 50 feet from, from Riverside Drive all the way up to Olive Street. So that's why this site is so different than, than John, as you mentioned, the, the, the neighborhood on the south side of the tracks. You've seen these, these are just some existing, or these are just some preliminary massing diagrams, look a little prettier than that. But trying to showcase that pedestrian oriented building development along Riverside Drive here. The tracks are off to the left here. I think it's important, this, this site is currently zoned Riverfront West, which would allow a five story building of this time with the setbacks included. And then this is that text amendment where we're looking for that seven story up against the railroad tracks. And I think that was defined as 200 feet from that, from that railroad property line. Here you can see the corner of Myrtle and Riverside. Again, the, the grayed out buildings are what would currently be allowed because this site has already been rezoned. And then we're just asking to extend that up, stair step it up and then to provide building entries along Myrtle and then provide townhouse options. So we actually have people living and, and, and entering and accessing their apartments from Myrtle and make it a more walkable area. And then the walkability is increased by the centralized courtyard space. This is the lobby to a potential hotel. This is our resident, or our, our commercial retail area that could include pedestrian plazas, not just for the residents of this development, but also for the, for the neighborhood to kind of expand on what's been happening on the south side of the railroad tracks. This is looking at that from the other direction. This would be a pedestrian walkway through the site, which is something we've talked with the city about with planning. This is looking at a view from the south side of the railroad tracks. You can see the existing apartment building here and then that seven story exposure just peeking over the trees. There's that future tunnel location, which I think really helps connect this project to the others. That'll be a future project for the city by city. And then these are just the rezoning diagrams where we're looking at, you know, expanding this existing Riverfront, West Riverfront District up to the back property lines on Olive. As Danielle said, it's kind of a mix of zones right now, including RM44, which is the highest density zone in the city. And we're, and we're proposing to zone this entire area West Riverfront. The idea here, this is a section through Myrtle Avenue. So you can see that grade change between Olive Street at 700 and Riverside Drive at 650. These are those existing buildings. This is that five story max that, that is allowed right now in the current zone parcel on the corner. And if we were looking at the south side of the tracks, you know, where, where the sites are relatively flat, this is where, as Danielle said, that West Riverfront Subdistrict probably wouldn't be appropriate in other areas of the West Riverfront, but because we have this grade change, it actually takes this height diagram and steps it down. And then the way that we're envisioning the site, you're seeing that we're really only about a story above that existing structure that's there now. That is the end of my presentation. And I guess I'd, I'd just like to open it up for questions. Is there anything I breezed over too quickly?
Any questions for Mark? I don't hear any, Mark. Thank you so much.
Okay, apologize for the audio.
No worries. Let me, if we can have you stop sharing your screen, please. Thank you. And then is there anyone else that would like to address this topic? Please raise your hand or press star nine. Seeing no one. Council, are you inclined to vote with PNC recommendation? If so, please nod your head. I think I see, I, I see a majority of four. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, Mims.
Second, Thomas.
All right, council discussion.
Well, I have to say, I, I was pretty excited to see the possibility of development on this site. That corner, I have to admit, has been an eyesore for quite some time, ever since they took the, especially since they took the come and go station down from there. But it sounds like just a really ambitious project to me. I mean, kudos to the planners and the developers for all of the thought that went into this with, with everything that you're planning for this site. Because looking at the aerial views, you're right, it, it's, it's a lot of asphalt, a lot of just surface, no, no green space, very little green space. So I like the idea you've got the adding the green space. But I do have some concerns, although the visuals that you were sharing, Mark did, did look a little better as far as the transition with the residential area with the, even with the bonus height, the transition wasn't quite as extreme as I thought it would, would be. I also have concerns because in the PNC had talked about this and Mark mentioned this is that, that tunnel, the walkway under the railroad overpass. And that's still, as far as I know, an uncertainty. So I mean, I think it sounds great that you want to build a six foot sidewalk in front of the area, but it's going to be kind of like a sidewalk that comes and goes from nowhere because it's not connected to the other side of Riverside Drive. We're certainly hoping that we'll finally get an approval to, to have that tunnelled area built. But then I, I think we can't call it too walkable just yet if, if we don't, can't connect that with the other side of that railroad overpass. But otherwise, I mean, it certainly, as I said, sounds very ambitious and, and very nice, a nice mixture, that total definition of mixed use by the things that you're talking about, the commercial and the residential and senior housing and affordable housing. So I think the general principle of the the whole site sounds good.
I think I have a few comments. It's interesting to see with, this is a four acre site. A lot of lot consolidation, which sometimes can be problematic, but I think in this case it provides some interesting site planning opportunities where you can mass the buildings in such a way to create that interior open space, which I think speaks to some of the contextual issues Riverside Drive that perhaps, you know, lingering along Riverside Drive may not be the best place to linger. So setting it back into the development, I think was a good move. I too had some concerns coming into the meeting with the transition on, on that west edge. I wish there had been those elevation, section elevations in the packet. I didn't, if they were in there, I didn't see them. That, that began to address the relationships that I was concerned about. And it, if, if that's indicative of what the development will be, I think that transition should work just fine. It's a very ambitious project, you know, this is a kind of a, I, from my standpoint, a challenging time to develop at the scale. You know, some of the markets that could be tapped into, you know, the hotel market, office space seems somewhat fragile right now, but the building concept, I think, is a strong one.
I like the look of this. As Pauline said, this has been in need of redevelopment for quite some time. And certainly the elevation change on Myrtle makes this challenging, but also opens it up to some, you know, different kind of development than we have typically seen on lots of sites. So I would agree with John, it's certainly ambitious. And, you know, this doesn't mean we're going to see it tomorrow, obviously. But I think it's a good project for the future and as the developers can make this work to really kind of complete that west side of Riverside Drive that has improved so much from, really even from all the way down to the intersections of Highway one and six with some changes down on that corner, on that northwest corner. You know, we're really getting a better look as you come up through there. And certainly there's still some pieces left to do. But this is, this will be a big improvement in that entrance into the, into the city.
I'm really grateful to see how this comp plan amendment is, it's a great illustration of when we have a more modern comprehensive plan and I think have some good examples of development that have occurred under it very recently. So that we can see how expanding that to this area, which I think really this is, this is a good example of some renewal of this area. Certainly how it is developed now is not not a really beneficial use for the neighborhood or, you know, there's that, just the kind of the open space. And as I think Pauline mentioned, the, the eyesore of that area. So I'm grateful to see a comp plan that is, I think, well thought out and primed for expansion to this spot. So I think it's just very thoughtful and I agree with what my colleagues have said about the sensitivity to the, the residential immediately to the west. This is very different than, than putting a high density area next to single family where there hasn't been a high density residential previously. But if you look at what this is replacing, I think it's a very nice, nice transition, makes sense to me.
All right, I'm going to say ditto to everything that's been spoken so far. I think it's a, a great, great project for now and we'll wait and see what it all ends up being. So are we ready for roll call? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Cilly?
Yes.
Taylor?
Kayla?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero, 10F rezonant four acres at Motion passes seven to zero. Ten F rezonant four acres at Myrtle Avenue and South Riverside Drive. Ordinance conditionally resona approximately four acres of land located at Myrtle and South Riverside Drive to Riverfront Crossing West Riverfront District Zone. And I'm going to open the public hearing. All right, welcome Danielle.
You're going to get me talking on mute one of these times tonight. Okay, so this is the second of three applications pertaining to the subject property highlighted here in the white boundary as assembled from fifteen smaller parcels. It's currently under three different zoning categories. The applicant is requesting to rezonate entirely to West Riverfront Sub District of the Riverfront Crossings Form Based Code District to be intended for commercial and mixed use redevelopment with street facing entry, entries and streetscapes designed to provide, provide a comfortable and attractive environment for pedestrians buffered from vehicular traffic along Riverside Drive. We do review applications for rezonings to two criteria, one consistency with the comprehensive plan and one compatibility with the existing neighborhood. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, there is a great potential to improve pedestrian circulation both along Riverside Drive through the installation of more modern sidewalks, as well as a condition for circulation through the site that staff has proposed. Also redevelopment replaced the existing surface parking with more structured parking hidden from view or central to the site. Kind of de-emphasizing the auto orientation that is Riverside Drive today. Also enhancing the streetscape and overall corridor aesthetics and bringing in a mix of uses, all elements of our comprehensive plan that we want to support. I just want to mention that the concept plan for the site, while we've been looking at some images, what could be, it's all still really conceptual at this stage and could change over time. However, the general requirements for which development in a form based code district would need to be designed to would remain the same. So again, implementing that form base code to really get the type of quality development that we've expressed in our comprehensive planning, regardless of what the concept would be. And creating that transition between neighborhoods through good, good building design. As far as compatibility with the existing neighborhood, again, as you've seen in some of the early images, the new redevelopment that's occurred and the existing multifamily development in the area, really setting the context for this corridor along Riverside Drive. RM forty-four density, which is what the site is currently zoned, if it were to redevelop under that zoning designation, could become much more dense, but redevelopment under RM forty-four does not really have the building design elements that the form based code emphasizes. And really just acknowledging that any change in this neighborhood will present a notable change to the eastern view of the residents along Olive Court. Staff has included conditions, not just for properties that are abutting that residential district, but for properties next to, perhaps that was what Mr. Thomas was asking about, properties next to existing single family districts having additional design standards and criteria that would need to be met, kind of more carefully evaluating the context of the building in proximity to those areas while not directly abutting. Certainly the stepping down of building heights as shown by Mark earlier is one way to accomplish that. And clearly shows how that transition can be maintained as appropriate. Just a note again, with the Riverfront Crossings Affordable Housing is triggered when additional residential units are constructed. So there would be the opportunity for some affordable housing as well. The applicant submitted a traffic study is requested by staff. The traffic study demonstrated that the existing street network would allow for acceptable levels of operation or traffic for additional trips generated from and to the site. In an effort to simply avoid additional traffic conflict, staff is recommending a restriction on access to the site along Riverside Drive to one access point with a right in, right out design. Also, there's a condition proposed to clean up some of the right of way along the west side of Riverside Drive because there is a private street that is one of those parcels that's been assembled that juts out slightly out of line. So that would be addressed through a condition. Also replanning of this fifteen lots. And then staff is continuing to work with the Iowa Interstate Railroad to complete that pedestrian tunnel. And there are public work staff on the call tonight who can give you an update on that process. So I would turn it over to, I believe Scott is with us tonight.
Yeah, good evening, counsel and mayor council. This is Scott Silver, I'm the Assistant City Engineer. Just wanted to give you, I believe most of you are aware of this project, but wanted to give you just a quick update on it. Just in terms of the, the scope of the project, it includes the extension of a six foot sidewalk from his existing terminus south of the Iowa State Road to the intersection at Myrtle Avenue and Riverside Drive. To be able to accomplish that pedestrian tunnel with some associated lighting will need to be constructed through the Iowa Interstate Embankment. Project will also include roadway and pedestrian level lighting and then street trees. Next slide, please. I guess before I get into the bullet points on this slide, I guess I wanted to just note what the, the two images are. The top image is just a 3D rendering of, of what the pedestrian tunnel would look like from the north facing south. It doesn't include any of the, the planned future development off to the east, but it just to give you some perspective. And then the photo to the, on the bottom of the page is where the pedestrian tunnel will go through the, the railroad embankment if facing, it's actually facing north, south of the south of the railroad. So in terms of the current project status, we completed a study in two thousand and fourteen. The intent of the study was to identify a preferred alternative to, to get sidewalk connected through the Iowa State Railroad Embankment, but then also to pull together some estimated project costs for, for budgeting purposes. With that, then we did start preliminary and final design in two thousand and seventeen. I guess I would like to mention, as a part of the overall project, it's kind of a multi-phase project where we did a intersection improvement at Myrtle and Riverside. We added a traffic signal. It's a best improvements at that intersection. That was the first phase. And then this was going to be a subsequent phase to that project. So as of right now, we have pre-final plans prepared. We've sent those to the Iowa State Railroad for review. As I think Pauline, Council, Councilor Pauline had mentioned, the Iowa State Railroad had some, had some comments. We do have consultants that specializes in railroad design on board to help, to help work through those comments. I do, as far as the anticipated schedule, I've noted on their construction twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two with a question mark. That will kind of depend upon how quickly we can get through their comments and, and get an agreement in place to be able to extend the, the pedestrian tunnel through the railroad embankment. One other thing I did want to mention is this project can occur before or after the development. So it's kind of independent of what the developer ends up moving forward with. So I guess with that, I'd like to turn over to Danielle or maybe open it up for questions or you want to wait till after Danielle, you're done. It doesn't matter to me.
Why don't I pick it up and we can come back to you if there are questions at the end?
Sounds good.
So talking about infrastructure for the site, since this has been individually developed lots over the years, there are some items, some cleanup of this water services and things like that that will need to occur with development. That's sort of normal for the assembly of properties. Future stages of redevelopment would also need to apply with the current standards we have for the handling of stormwater and floodplain controls. So there are some definite improvements to be had through redevelopment to address the more modern standards that we have for those kinds of things. So again, as far as the development process goes, we're here at the rezoning stage to apply a West Riverfront Crossing zoning district to this property, the West Riverfront zoning district. Following this agenda item, there will be a code amendment as well to consider. Development would then go through the planning process, the design review for form based code projects and site plan reviews and building permits. As I mentioned, there are some conditions that staff recommended and the Planning and Zoning Commission also supported for this application. We did recommend approval and that was concurred by a vote of seven to zero from the Planning and Zoning Commission with the same conditions. Those six conditions include the installation of a sidewalk along Riverside Drive frontage, some additional pedestrian linkages through the site from Myrtle and Avenue to South Riverside Drive. Should development occur near the single family housing to the west, not necessarily abutting it, additional mitigation in design, including transitional design elements, including but not limited to increased separation or increased step backs should be considered. Limiting the access to the site from Riverside Drive to one access point, featuring a right in, right out design, cleaning up the seventy-five square feet of right of way along the rest, West Riverside Side Drive at Riverside Court area. And then prior to the issuance of building permits requiring planning of the future layout. That concludes staff report and Scott is still here as well.
Thanks to you both. Any questions for either of them? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine. Welcome, Mark.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I would just like to say thank you for the kind comments during the previous presentation. And just addressing a lot of the things, you know, we've been talking about cleaning up the utilities. We've been talking about bringing everything up to current standards. What an opportunity really it is to do that with this project as well as with these six items. We're in agreement with all of those as well. So if you do have any questions for me, I am available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor, I think I forgot to report that the CZA has been signed for this property as well.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Counselors, I'm going to have the screen sharing to be ended. Thank you so much. And counselors, are you inclined to agree with PNC? Yes. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. And can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Weiner.
Moved by Burkitt, seconded by Weiner. Council discussion. Hearing none?
Wait, oh, sorry. Yeah, I mean, this is a, the, this phase of the project really drew my attention toward Riverside Drive and how important it is for that street to be re-envisioned so that it's consistent with the character of the development. I mean, this is a major project along a pretty gritty street. And I would hope, you know, through pedestrian access, streetscape improvements, any way in which we can slow the traffic down would certainly be helpful. You know, we had some wonderful comments at our meeting with our legislative representatives where Mary Masher at the end mentioned having seen McCopan Street and you know, she commented on how I think it was even her grandsons were saying, this is a great street. Is it possible to make Riverside Drive a great street? I don't know, but at least we need to make it a better street and especially if we're investing, you know, if the community is investing so much into the properties that run along the side of it.
Well, I'll echo that, John. And I, I would like to say that Riverside Drive is a great street since it's on my side of town there and I travel up and down that street so many times. And I think over the years it, it has improved so much. And, and I'd like to thank Scott for sharing those videos of the proposed tunnel there under the overpass. I'm, I'm excited to see that right now. It's not safe. You can see the path that people are, are going around that overpass out onto Riverside Drive. And it's a very busy road. So that just isn't safe. So I, I will be so excited, so excited to see that happen and, and do hope that the railroad cooperates and, and agrees to let us do that.
All right, roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi? Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right. And we are at item number ten G. Zoning code amendment changes to Riverfront Crossings West Riverfront Sub District ordinance. Ordinance to amend Title fourteen zoning to expand the West Riverside Sub District boundaries and to increase the maximum bonus height and the West Riverfront Sub District to seven stories for properties north of and near the Iowa Interstate Railroad. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third of three applications regarding the subject property in one way or another. This is a amendment to our zoning codes, an amendment to the standards of the district to which the last application rezoned or began the rezoning of the property to. There are two aspects of this. The first is to implement the expansion of that master plan. Comp plan change that we were just talking about to actually include this land on the map in the zoning code that shows where this zoning district can be applied. The second is to increase the maximum bonus height from five to seven stories for properties in the West Riverfront Sub District in a very specific geographic area that are described as abutting the railroad and then also not being adjacent to residential property. The first of those code changes is really a housekeeping item at this point to bring the regulating plan map in the zoning code in alignment with that master with the comprehensive plan that we just talked about. At the first of the three applications, this graphic again shows the area, that expanded area on the right hand side in blue to the left of the kind of hooked line here. The second of the two changes proposed has to do with increases to maximum building heights. This is the only change would be that outline here in red. It would be a budding for parts of the West Riverfront Crossing District, abutting and within two hundred feet of the railroad, but not abutting residential zones. On the current maximum base height is four stories. This code change would allow for the bonus height, which can add one story to actually increase to seven stories. So nothing else would change. Nothing would change in abutting the residential zones. Nothing would change if you're not within two hundred feet of the railroad. So no bonus height for what abuts residential properties. And as I mentioned earlier, abutting is touching based on lots, but if lots change, this red area could change somewhat. The two hundred foot buffer from the railroad is shown here in yellow. And then put it all together and the areas where you could see some potential additional bonus height is shown in green along the railroad and fronting primarily Riverside Drive. Pardon me. So staff does again, look at comprehensive plan and existing neighborhood as the criteria as we review these. As Mark showed in his exhibit, there is significant topographic changes across the site, fifty feet of grade change that allows for the transition to occur across the site and building heights between the residential zone and the commercial corridor of Riverside Drive. And as far as comprehensive plan compliance, we've just talked about a comprehensive plan amendment that would bring it into alignment. So the next steps, we're at the zoning code amendment, the last of three. Development of the site would still require some additional steps. The preliminary and final plans, design review and site plan review, then eventual building permits. As I said, this is all conceptual at this point. So the applicant has some more work to do before you would likely see any of these applications coming before you. Based on the review of the relevant criteria and potential impacts, staff drafted and recommended that the zoning code be amended as explained to support the goals and strategies in the comprehensive plan related to promoting infill and promoting the commercial development on the west side of South Riverside Drive, transitioning to urban apartments and mixed use development. Specifically, the development of the recently assembled four acre fifteen parcel is contemplated under the previous master plan. And as November fifth meeting, my vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also And as November fifth meeting, my vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval of the zoning code change. Then I'm happy to answer questions.
I don't think there's any questions for you. Thank you. And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine on your phone. Seeing no one, councilors, are you inclined to, to vote in favor of the recommendation from P and Z? I'm seeing the majority. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved, Fergus.
Moved by Burkin, seconded by Saleh and council discussion. Roll call, please.
Oh, oh, Mayor, I just have one quick comment that's sort of bothering me a bit. I, I don't mind expanding the boundaries, but the phrase in there about increasing the maximum height bonus abutting the railroad there, I just can't see that that's, that's a very good thing, a very positive thing. Have that much height right along there, along the railroad. That's a very busy stretch of railroad. It's not one of the sites in town that you don't see much railroad traffic on. There's, there's railroad traffic on there constantly. I just don't see that that is a favorable thing. But I don't know how to separate that out from, from, from this proposal.
All right, are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item ten H, rezoning Camp Cardinal Road. Ordinance conditionally resound on approximately three-point-eighteen acres of land located north of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road for neighborhood public zone to community commercial with a planned development overlay zone. This is second consideration and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Can I, motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Move final adoption.
Second, Weiner.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine. Hearing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number ten I, Vacation and Conveyance Aportion of Camp Cardinal Road. Ordinance vacated in approximately two thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet of Camp Cardinal Road and authorizing conveyance to John Harding. This is second consideration and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived. Final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Taylor. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Move final adoption.
Second, Thomas.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Yes.
Sully. S. Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item ten J, Vacation and Conveyance of Right-of-Way Within Western Ten Feet of St. Matthew's Alley Adjacent to Parcel Number one zero zero two-three-three-four-zero-zero-one to the owner of eleven-twenty North Dodge Street. This is second consideration and staff requests expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passing to council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Item number ten K, rezoning at one oh nine, one eleven, one fifteen, one seventeen and one twenty-one, East College Street, local historic landmark. This is an ordinance rezoned approximately zero-point-five-five acres of property from Central Business Zone to CB ten with a historic district overlay for property located at one oh nine, one eleven, one fifteen, one seventeen and one twenty-one, East College Street. And this one is, we have a request to defer this item. Could I get a motion to defer until one, until January fifth, twenty twenty-one?
Move to defer.
Second, Mims.
All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Any council discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept the court, the correspondence?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Weiner.
Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number eleven.
Can I, I'm sorry, I'm sure Kelly or Eleanor would have caught this, but did we do final adoption of ten J?
We're just, we've just been texting about that and I don't think that you did, so.
Yeah, we consolidated, we consolidated the second and third readings, but I don't think we did a final consideration of it.
I don't think you did either, so we should finish it up.
So we're going to go back to ten J and then could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mims.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Saleh, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We are at item, and great catch. Thank you, Councilor Mims and staff.
We had just done so many of those consolidations. I was kind of in a roll and I was like, I don't think we adopted.
Yes, all right. Item number eleven, water, wastewater connections ordinance. Ordinance admitting Title sixteen entitled Public Works, Chapter three, City Utilities, Article D, Wastewater Treatment Works, Users, Section six, Building Sores and Connections. This is second consideration and staff requests expedited action. They get a motion, yeah.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Taylor. And anyone on the, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could they get a motion to pass and adopt?
They're moved.
Second, Weiner.
Public discussion, anyone like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number twelve, unbiased policing ordinance. This is second consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Fergus.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? See Nicholas' hand. Welcome, Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, a lot of the, the problems with this ordinance were already brought up last, in the last meeting. There was one issue, though, that I had thought of afterwards that wasn't brought up at the time, so I'd like to bring it up now. So this is from the executive summary to the, the ordinance itself. It states, Iowa City policy has long prohibited bias-based policing and the Iowa City Police Department is committed to the equitable treatment of all individuals. Now, one of the reasons why this ordinance is so pointless, one is because supposedly it, I guess, instantiates policies that have already been in place, which if those policies were in place last year in August of twenty nineteen, which I happen to know that they were, it didn't actually prevent an actual ICPD officer from racially profiling a black man, Chris Kelly. I mean, this has been well-covered in, you know, your own local news media. So again, I mean, I, so I have to reiterate the points that were made previously. Like, these things are not going to change until you actually start to, one, as IFR representatives have noted, you think about these things in structural terms, not just on an individual basis. And furthermore, you actually think about what it is that these policies are in fact not doing. The officer in question not only wasn't disciplined, he was made a community outreach officer, which is just beyond the pale. And in fact, in many ways, it has echoes of the fact that in twenty fifteen, after Travis Graves assaulted a black teenager in the rec center, he was then also later made into a public outreach officer. So the thing is, like, the more things change, the more they stay the same. And so, again, this isn't going to do anything. These sort of like Band-Aid fixes that you, I mean, these sort of PR things that you keep doing, they're not actually addressing the fundamental structural issues that need to be addressed. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. I think the last time I, you know, did give my support for this, and I'm going to give it again. I do believe that this is a policy that we're doing publicly as well as individually. We're wanting this to really take a hold of everyone within our police department. It's very important that the message is very clear that in our community, we want unbiased treatment to happen when we're doing policing. And so I'm going to support this again tonight.
I will also, Mayor, I believe that it, it, it is a step in the right direction, although, you know, as been mentioned, that these, these things have been in practice, but it wasn't necessarily a protocol written down, codified on paper. And this, this codifies it on paper, so I think it's a step in the right direction.
All right, any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Item passed at seven to zero. Item number thirteen is council appointments, senior center. Thirteen A is senior center commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Should that be January, yes, January twenty twenty-one. Time is flying. All right, so council discussion.
Well, this is, this is a little bit of an easy one since it's a, although it says a one male applicant, but we don't have a male applicant, but the one non or non-gender, nun, Linda Vogel, we've set a precedent here letting those who are serving unexpired terms continue on with a full term. So I would, I would recommend that she be appointed to do that.
Okay. I'm seeing some nodding, so I'm going to take that as a yes. So any other discussion on this item?
Just that we hope we have more people apply so that we can, so that we can fill out the board the next time around. It's a really important institution in this town.
Absolutely, and we need a male applicant. Yep, all right, well, I think we're ready to appoint. So could I get a motion to appoint Linda Vogel to the Senior Center Commission?
Move on, Sally.
Oh, second, Taylor.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Taylor. And roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number fourteen, announcement of vacancies previous. And this is Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by five PM, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, licensed electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Northside, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number fifteen, which is Ryan Longnecker. I don't know if he's still with us. There you are. Yeah.
Good evening, Council. I just have two main things to report tonight. So the first thing was just about COVID. First thing is, I convened the COVID nineteen task force, which includes partners from undergraduate student government, graduate and professional student government, all of shared governance, UIO administration, the downtown district, as well as city, including Ashley Monroe and Counselor Weiner. And we all just discussed new updates that were happening as we had a peak in cases recently. And that was a really good chance to inform each other of what we've, we each have been doing and possibility. And that was a really good chance to inform each other, but we've, we each have been doing and possibilities of collaboration going forward. And I also just want to remind any students that are, might be watching that even though cases are going down in Iowa, this happens in waves. We've seen this happen before and if we relax again, we will see it go back up. I know that people are seeing that a vaccine is coming, but my age group, our age group will be the very last to receive that vaccine, so please do not count on that for another, at least several months. And on to a more lighthearted topic somewhat. But I just wanted to give a shout out to our Director of Academic Affairs, Reagan Smock, and all those that in student government who have been working on a pass fail option to be reinstated for the fall 2020 semester. There was data collected from a total of 6,467 undergrad students, which represents about 28.8% of the undergraduate population. Gathering data about would they use a pass fail option? Did they use it last semester when it was offered? A total of 53% used it last semester, but when it's, take out the first years who responded to the survey, it was actually 65% used the pass fail option and at least one class or more. And 82% of respondents said that they definitely or probably would use it in fall 2020. And it also includes a lot of student testimonials that are very compelling, so this will be presented to the UIowa administration here in the next week or two. And so we are hoping that the administration will agree to reinstate a pass fail option for students this semester. But with that, that's all I have for this evening and thank you, council.
Thank you, Ryan. And yeah, students are kind of vacated most of our city. So alrighty, item number 16, city council information. Any updates from our city councilors? Seeing some not enough hits, okay, all right. City manager, any updates from you?
No updates tonight, Mayor.
All right. Ashley Monroe, where are you hiding? There you are.
I'll just note that we successfully launched or kicked off that solar study group recently and it's moving along well. And we wrapped up our staff budget meetings, so we're busy preparing that for council's review in a month or so. That's it.
Awesome, thank you. Our city attorney? All right, we can't hear you, but we'll teach you how to use your mic in the future.
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, and then our city clerk?
Nothing from me.
All right, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.